I notice of this meeting has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. And that notice was published in the Jersey Journal, city website, copies provided, the record, and orchestra ledger also placed on a bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. Written objections, if any, shall be made to the city clerk.
All rise. The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice.
Roll call, Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Fisher.
Here.
Mrs. Jabour.
Here.
President Zano.
Present.
Mr. Quintero.
Present.
Mr. Ramos.
President.
Mr. Russo.
Present.
Vice President Doyle.
Present.
First order of business is nomination in order for president of the city council. Nominations are open.
Councilwoman Jabour?
I wish to nominate Councilman Doyle for council president.
Second.
And the other nominations? Move that nominations be closed?
Motion to close?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Resolution appointing Jim Doyle as president of the Hoboken City Council. Mr. Cohen?
Councilman Remus is just coming in.
Fisher?
Wait, wait, wait.
Hang on a sec.
Wait. Ruben's just coming in.
President of the city council, Jim Doyle has been nominated, Mr. Jim Doyle. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
Mr. President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Vice President Doyle?
Aye.
And I voted aye as well.
You started.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. That's okay.
Well, you started.
You started, but didn't actually ask him, he interrupted you, so.
My right hand.
Right hand?
Okay. I, Jim Doyle.
I, Jim Doyle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of council president.
Of council president.
To the city of Hoboken.
To the city of Hoboken.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me God.
To help me God. Thank you, council members.
Council president, how long have you been on the city council?
This is the 12th year.
You're council president now.
Eleven.
Eleven years, and how many times have you been council president?
Eleven?
We just want to say congratulations, we're all very happy and supportive.
Thank you.
Nominations are now in order for vice president of the city council.
Council president, Councilman Quintero? I would like to nominate Councilman Cohen.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
Move their nominations be closed?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council president?
Resolution appointing.
Councilman Fisher?
Yeah. When you go to vote, just for two seconds for everyone, when you see how some of the votes come out tonight, when we started this process, you know, we're in a unique situation because we have eight council members this year, and when we started the conversation on this back in November, you know, we were hopeful that we were going to have leadership be bipartisan, and I think with where directionally this is going to go, you're going to see that that's not bipartisan and some people not supporting it, and so the people not supporting it are because we had, not personal to the person, but more because we just thought we were going to get to have bipartisan leadership, where effectively we would have, you know, someone that represented or was close with the administration and someone that represented the independent council members, so I just wanted to put it out there so you understand the votes that are going to happen. Go ahead.
Thank you, councilwoman. Mr. Frina, call the vote.
Nomination, vice president, Phil Cohen, Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
Mr. President Zano?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
No.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Okay.
I, Phil Cohen. Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of council vice president.
Council vice president.
To the city of Hoboken.
To the city of Hoboken.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me God.
Okay, moving along now, we have a resolution to appoint.
Do we?
Do you want me to nominate?
We'll do the furniture switch next meeting, is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem at all.
Mind her?
No problem at all.
Okay.
I'll switch with Phil.
Okay.
At least for now.
You got to take all of your.
Yeah, just give me a second.
To try this.
I signed to a, can you pass it to Joe? Yeah, please.
Congratulations, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, council president.
He wants to do that, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Jim is CL three.
Okay, on to CL three.
CL three, appointment of a CY 2025 Class Three City Council Representative to the Hoboken Planning Board.
Council president?
Nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jim Doyle again to be on the planning board.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much. CL four?
Do we have to vote?
See a resolution?
Wait, we have to vote.
All those in favor?
Close nominations.
Okay, call the vote, thank you.
Sorry.
Anyone else? Call the vote, I'm messing up.
That's right.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye. Thank you again.
No, no, thank you.
CL five?
CL five?
Appointing to the Hoboken University Medical Center.
Council president?
Four.
Skip four, all right.
Yeah.
Business, resolution of the city council, the Hoboken Appointing, a member to the Hoboken Business Alliance Incorporated Board of Trustees.
Council president?
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Ruben Ramos.
Second.
Second. Any other nominations? Okay, Mr. Frina, close.
Motion to close.
Close.
Second.
And call the vote? Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're getting there, Jim, you're getting there.
CL five, appointing a member to Hoboken.
CL four. Call the vote.
I did, I did, oh, I did four. All right.
He did all in favor to close nominations.
CL four.
Now we have to do an actual vote.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye. We've done this before.
Ms. Fisher? Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
I said yes, too.
Yeah.
She voted yes, correct?
I voted yes, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
CL five, appointing a member to the Hoboken University Medical Center Board of Directors.
Council president?
Councilwoman Jabour?
I'm just going to keep helping you out, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Fisher.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Six, CL six, resolution appointing, city Hoboken Appointing, a member to the Cannabis Review Board.
Council president?
Mr. Councilman Cohen?
Like to nominate Councilman Quintero?
Second.
Aye.
Any other nominations?
No. Motion to close.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Frina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
CL seven to CL eight, nine, 10, if you want to vote on them all at once.
Yep. I agree. Anyone object?
Council president, can I just make a quick comment before we vote?
Yes.
In CL 10, David Givon has been an alternate on the zoning board for three years, he's worked really hard, he's given a lot of hours of service, and I'm proud to nominate him to serve as a four-year full term as a commissioner on the zoning board, and thank him for his service. Thanks, council president.
Anyone else? Motion to close?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Frina, this call for CL seven, eight, nine, and 10?
Yes. Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Okay. The rest would be on, oh, no, F one.
Council president?
Resolution authorizing temporary appropriations for the calendar year 2025.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Can I just make a quick comment on CL nine? It doesn't change anything, but we have the newspapers, you know, we're in a transition where several of our newspapers are no longer going to be in print, and we've had this law forever that has required a print newspaper for notices, but we're evolving to the modern world, and I just checked with our business administrator that for the ones that are no longer going to be in print, like I think Jersey Journal as of February 1st is no longer going to be in print, we're going to be able to do notices online till, it sounds like March, the state is going to change, you know, make a change to the state law, but just to let people know that if they're ever looking for notices in Jersey Journal, they'll be able to see them beyond January 1st online, which is a first, we've never had it before.
The online version of Jersey Journal?
Yes, yes.
Will continue, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. Well, we should confirm.
Council president, on F one?
F one, yes, Councilwoman Russo.
Thank you, council president. Director, last year, we talked about the budget and making sure that we would start that conversation immediately in the new year. Do you have any documents prepared for the council and the subcommittee so that we could start looking at that? I know this is a formality to really get the year moving with the temporary appropriation, but I just want to keep it on everybody's radar so that we don't fall into the same position we were last year, where we're talking about it late in the year.
So there are things that I can share, there is not a completed budget, there are still things that we wait for from the state to be told to us in terms of what. So there are absolutely things I can share, when a new subcommittee is put together, I'm more than happy to share whatever is requested.
If you could, if you could share that with the entire council, not knowing where that subcommittee goes right now, even if there are things that are missing that we would wait for the state, just leave a blank or just make a note in that line item so that we could see it as if it was a presented budget, and then we can make those changes as we go along.
Sure, I know that there are, every city department is continuing to put the final I's and T's on each of their proposed budgets, so once that is completed, I will send that over to the city council.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you, anyone else on F one? All right. Motion to close?
Motion.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Frina? Call the vote, F one, Mr. Frina?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
The rest is consent agenda, public portion on resolutions.
I'm looking at public portion on resolutions. Kevin Davis? Is this T seven, Mr. Davis?
Government, government jobs have many different benefits. I would know as a former public employee myself. You have a negotiated contract with annual pay increases, many of the times, many of the times, you have a union, you have a good healthcare plan, you have retirement benefits, but at Hoboken, the retirement benefits are even better than most governments, because even if you stop working for the city, you can continue working for the city. Now, how's this in relation to T seven? If you look at T seven, looks like a standard resolution, it's a contract for Alta Consulting, which seems like a generic consulting name, you guys approve consulting contracts all the time, but I took a shovel and did a deep dive into that part of the agenda, and I found a letter from our former transportation director who left the city in July, pushing for this contract to provide on-call transportation consulting related services, and, you know, I did learn in kindergarten to at least say something nice if you're critical, so one nice thing I can say about that letter is he correctly refers to the Kimley Horn study as a parking study. So even though, like in the last meeting, I pointed out that in between the Kimley consultants and the city, they said, don't use the word parking to talk about the Kimley Horn parking study, at least the former transportation director does it. So it's a $50,000 contract, I don't know what his hourly rate is, because I don't know his title at the firm, but if you guys approve it, I will know, because I'll be able to see how much the consulting firm billed the city and which employees were working on it, but so not only are you guys voting on $50,000 for the former transportation director's firm, but his predecessor, the transportation director before the last transportation director, also consulted for the city last year. So I Oprah'd the Ramble contracts, which is a consulting firm that employs the previous transportation director, and he made over $10,000 consulting for the city last year on transportation services. So I got to say, I had no idea that, you know, being a public employee in Hoboken means you can continue working for the city even when you're done working for the city. So I appreciate if you guys ask some tough questions on this and find out more about what services are being provided, but I always figure you are either working for the city or you're not, but I guess not in Hoboken.
Is this a resolution? Thank you, Mr. Davis. I should, I neglected to mention that CD four is being carried tonight, so, I'm sorry, A four, A four, I stand corrected. And T two? Okay, T two and A four. Patricia Waiters?
All right, A four, I had it circled on page three, is that what you pulling? The contract with the police chief?
That is going, that's carried, yep.
It's carried? See, I don't like all of these little typical games, but it is what it is, and I hope that's a professional move with that one, because I had that.
It's just more time to look at it.
Okay? I'm speaking on basically all the resolutions, because these appointments come from you guys. I'm a little teed off, but I'm glad Kevin put it straight, okay, with respect to appointments and employment. I'm going to say one thing, and I'm going to say it, I hope, for the last time, from the last 30 years, I don't care about neither one of you guys trying to intimidate and hurt me and my family. I'm keeping a huge paper trail, me and Mr. Freeman, the business administrator, I tried to share with him on a very professional level, and this is for all of y'all, because you know what this town is about? We're going to move them anyway, it's our way or the highway. Remember I used to say that when Dawn Zimmer was the mayor? It's our way or the highway. We felt hopeless, we felt no matter what we do, y'all got to vote, y'all going to do what y'all want anyway. With that being said, I am sick and tired of being sick and tired. I don't mean to be emotional, just as I let the curtain down and become your friend and embrace y'all, you still want to play Pat Waiters? We got to get her any way we can, when the opportunity arise, Mr. Jason Freeman. This man had no insurance, nothing whatsoever with respect to knowing how to do his job, right? Straight off the street, no experience, no nothing, and they hired him because Ravi and Dawn had the vote, simply because of that. Prior to that, him and John Allen's was like buddies, okay? I stood at the same microphone to make a comment about John Allen, lo and behold, I was attacked and my car was towed the very next day. And when I bring it to the highest in authority and follow the chain of command, it's a joke to them. I'm saying this tonight to say this, everything y'all vote on and come out of this city and play these dirty games, the integrity is stripped, it look crazy, especially with a Hoboken mayor election coming up. I called Cheryl Phallic, and she waiting for me, and I hope you watching, Cheryl, y'all expected us to fight. Cheryl jumped on my flag and we fought over the yes/no vote, but you see how Pat Waiters is, when I say I hold integrity, I call Cheryl, and I embraced her. I said, you know what's funny? You're Ravi Balla's appointment, when you should have got it anyway, and because you ran with the wrong party, with Ralphie, they didn't give it to her. I wanted to show y'all this in the games y'all play, okay? With respect to, again, Mr. President Doyle, with everything on this agenda, the same thing with Jen Janatino's seat, rest in peace, my sister, y'all playing with the seat so it could stay 4-4. I'm telling these people tonight that's watching this, that's fed up like me, please don't call me after you put a mayor in the seat to play the same dirty politics. Don't call me. You playing with people's money, you playing with people's livelihood, you playing with our children's life, and it's not funny, and y'all a big liability, a bunch of lawsuits. You don't need a rocket scientist, it's not them, taxpayers is tired of these fabulous lawsuits. And yes, Jason, I will afford an attorney. I'm asking tonight, I'm going to set up a legal defense fund, and let me see who donates money. This is ridiculous. I'm going to tell y'all again, I'm being attacked, I don't care about nobody in the police department, I don't care about nobody in Esther's office, I want this addressed, and that's the definition, Jason, of abusive of authority. He got Ravi in his back pocket so it don't go no higher. What they doing is unethical, what they doing is illegal, and I need it addressed. So the next step is this city council. I'm putting it on the record tonight, because I'm asking for an independent investigation. Now, this is serious. I don't care about no language, a lawyer write on a paper, and a legislature, y'all got to do what's right for this damn city. Enough is enough.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters. No more members of the public speaking on resolutions?
Motion to close public portion?
I think, yeah.
I think Liz. Oh, sorry, Liz Nadoya.
Liz?
Nadoya had signed up, I thought.
Okay, you signed up under the public portion of just general public portion, but you can come up now.
Sit down, Liz.
You're speaking on CL two?
Come on, now's the time.
Yes.
That's correct.
By the way, Mr. Clerk, we have CL one through 10, and then we have CL one through three again later on, but, so to be clear, you've signed up to speak on the Climate Superfund? Yeah, okay, thank you. Ms. Nadoya?
So, good evening, everyone, my name is Liz Cohen-Doy, I live at 235 Garden Street. I'm here this evening to urge the council to support the resolution introduced by Jim Doyle and also by Phil Cohen, asking the Hoboken City Council to back the Climate Superfund Act. This bill, if passed, will hold the fossil fuel producers accountable for destruction caused by climate change. It has been scientifically proven that climate change has been caused by the rapid rise in global temperatures. This warming is caused by our increased dependence on fossil fuels, and the logic of requiring the corporations who produce these fuels to pay for the crises created by climate change makes perfect sense. Extreme climate events cost the US government billions of dollars every year. We know we lived through some of them, actually many of them, Hurricane Sandy being perhaps the most horrific and the most costly. At present, these costs are shouldered by you and I, by your constituents, and disproportionately by the poor and those already suffering from environmental racism. Property insurance in Hoboken and Hudson County is incredibly high because of our vulnerability to the adverse effects of climate change, catastrophic storms, and sea level rise. The time has come for this burden to shift from us to the industry that has contributed to the causes of climate change. This Climate Superfund Act will achieve that. The fossil fuel industry in New Jersey is responsible for making more than 1 billion, that's with a B, tons of greenhouse gas emissions since 1957. Companies like Exxon, Shell, and BP would be forced by law to pay for the destruction they have created if this bill is passed. Governor Hochul of New York just signed the New York Climate Superfund Bill on Friday, December 27, 2024. I believe the time for New Jersey is now. I believe the time for New Jersey is now. I've been made proud by your votes several times on past environmental issues, and I hope I can count on each of you passing this resolution. Passing this one will encourage many municipalities to pass their own, and this in turn will push our state senators and assembly members to squeeze this bill over the finish line. Let's make Hoboken the environmental leader again. Let's make this one unanimous for the people Hoboken, Hudson County, and New Jersey. And with your indulgence, I'd like to read a message from Assemblyman John Allen, who is the sponsor of this bill in our assembly. And he has written this. "The Climate Superfund Act is written to hold fossil fuel corporations accountable for the damage they've caused over the course of decades to our environment and public health. With climate change-related costs skyrocketing, it is crucial that we shift the burden to the companies responsible for the emissions that contribute to extreme weather events and other climate-related disasters we experience with an alarming frequency. The Climate Superfund Act ensures fossil fuel companies pay their fair share for the damages they've caused through a strict liability program, funding vital climate change adaptation projects in vulnerable communities. These projects will strengthen infrastructure, protect public health, and improve our resilience in the face of future disasters. I thank Councilman Jim Doyle for introducing this resolution and kindly ask for your support by passing this resolution tonight and help New Jersey recover from the effects of climate change while holding polluters accountable." So, I would like to be able to count on you, the council members of our great city of Hoboken. Let's make this city, this state, whole again. Thank you very much for allowing me to.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen, and thank you for your zealous environmental advocacy. So that, just so that there is no confusion, the signup sheet for the resolutions, that we have concluded that, if there's anyone here who wanted to speak on a specific resolution versus the general public portion, which happens later, you know, let us know now. So, anyway, motion to?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, consent items, gentlemen?
I have to report.
Pardon?
I have to report.
I will, that's.
No, to re-
Consent item, or the opposite of consent, the non-consent items.
Right.
Yep, that's what I'm asking for you to tell me, which ones you want off.
CD4.
CD4?
Sorry, CC13?
CC13.
CC, my apologies.
Yep.
And F9?
Are you gonna take CL2 off, or no?
Isn't CL2 already removed? T7?
Yes, actually, you're right. T7, yep. Anything else, council members?
Did you pull CL2?
CL2 is pulled because it was?
Actually, it hasn't been, so let's pull CL2.
Okay, CL2.
T7?
Thanks, Mike.
T7, I pulled. Oh, sorry, guys.
Okay, so we have CD4, CC13, CL2, F9, and T7. And for the remainder, on consent. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
I'm abstain on CC7, no on CC8, and yes on everything else. I am a no, no, or I'm sorry, abstain on CC7, a no on CC8, and a yes on everything else.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
Mr. Presidentano?
I'm an aye on everything except CL3, the appointment, I'm a no, CL3.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Okay, I was making sure we're doing this in proper order.
CD4.
CD4.
So, this is me.
Yep.
This, we have a council rule that says the title is supposed to actually have the address, so the public can be aware of what we're talking about, and we, I think we approved that unanimously, and we added some language. So, because that's not in this one, I'd like to just carry it one meeting and fix it for the next meeting so the public has a chance to know what this is. Do I have to, like, do I, is that something, Ruben, you're the sponsor, can we, this is the CD4, CD4?
CD4? Yeah, actually, yes, but I think we're also looking to expand that as well to include police station area as well, that contract, the next meeting, our discussions, so we can put the addresses for this one to make it correct, show the exact addresses for the area you're talking about, so the lots and lots, yes?
Yeah, yeah.
That's your request?
Yep.
So we'll do that, and I think we're also looking for, next council meeting, have an addition to this contract to expand the scope.
All right.
So we have two redevelopment zone plans being prepared. So presumably the cost could also go up, as we expect.
So we're gonna, okay, so we won't vote on this, so we'll carry this, or we'll remove this from this agenda, and we'll have the title fixed on the next one.
It'll be pulled and rewritten.
Yeah, pulled, perfect.
If it had the addresses on there, as it's supposed to be now by our new law we just passed, I'd be, let's call a vote, but it doesn't. But it will have expansion of that zone is what we're looking for.
Okay, then, we won't be voting on CD4 tonight. I think CC13 is the next. Taylor Law Group?
I guess my question is, this is a big dollar amount, and are they, is Taylor doing anything other than that one thing that they did that they didn't do well?
Yeah.
They are doing, and does this relate to the one thing they didn't do well, or to other things?
No invoice for the one thing they didn't do well have been approved or paid.
Okay, so this is just for other stuff, and we're gonna continue doing stuff with them even though they didn't do well?
Well, they're finishing up stuff that they didn't do well.
Okay. All right.
Can you repeat what you said? I can't hear anything from this, from what you said.
So, this, Taylor does a number of things for us, but one of the things that, one of the cases they've worked on, they haven't done a very good job on, which is under discussion. So I just wanted to make sure that this, this 20,000 is bigger than a lot of them, that it doesn't relate to that, that it relates to some other things. So, I know I'm speaking in, I'm speaking in tongues, but I'm okay with it.
Let me fly. We can get them.
Sorry.
Did, Brian, did you say that we were not invoiced for the activities that we were not satisfied?
The issue that the councilwoman is speaking about, we have been invoiced for, they have not been processed at this point in time, or waiting to, the fix to be done.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is, I'm okay with this.
You're okay with this.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Farina, call the vote for CC13?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
Presidentano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
CL2 is next. Councilman Cohen, or Councilman Fisher is also a co-sponsor of this.
Go ahead.
I want to thank Liz Cohen-Doye for her advocacy on this. She referred to the fact that Governor Hochul just signed a super fund law into effect. It was sponsored by Assemblyman Dinowitz in New York, whose office I'm very familiar with. It is a trailblazing super fund law. We should be following that path. A lot of the funds that are created for this super fund deal with resiliency, the kinds of things that we've dealt with, climate change here. Hoboken has been at the vanguard when it comes to resiliency parks and adapting to climate change. We see the construction project going on right now, which is not a great thing for our traffic, but it will be a great thing for our long-term resiliency. So I think it's a great idea. I hope New Jersey follows New York's example. I hope Governor Murphy passes it. I want to thank Assemblyman John Allen for his leadership and his statement and support as well. Thank you, Council President.
I would add, you know, the super fund legend is, I think it was Lautenberg was the one who originally passed in New Jersey, the first super fund law in the nation back in the 70s. And the name "super fund" up to now has meant addressing toxic waste, abandoned toxic waste sites. So the idea of raising money through a tax or through a liability scheme for here, the "super fund," it just means accumulating a significant amount, and we're talking billions, to address the impacts of climate change. So it's, 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 this is, you know, as you said, I believe Vermont may have one as well, but we're certainly at the vanguard of trying to address the effects of climate change on the state and all of our residents here in Hoboken and statewide. So, we wish the governor the best of luck. Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
Presidentano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
F9?
Yep. This, this is just a general, can you describe? This is Acacia.
Sure. This is our annual contract. Acacia has been our, serves as our financial advisor. They do a number of things. The most, probably the biggest part of this contract is they manage structuring our debt and debt service. When the city bonds, they often, they are the ones who prepare, in conjunction with our bond council, all the work that's done to lay out what that statement looks like when it comes to budget season, the city council asks for what our debt statement is, that's prepared by the team at Acacia. In addition, they are a representative to S&amp;P when we go out and get a credit rating.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Farina, call the vote, F9?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
Presidentano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
T7, Councilman Russo?
Hey, Council President, Director, if you don't mind, could you kind of get into the details and the weeds on this?
Sure. So, CA1 on your agenda tonight, the council passed on consent, was pre-qualifying a whole litany of different firms, it was 71 in total. One of those firms for on-call services is Alta. We do on-call contracts throughout the year, you adopt a number of them. This one specifically, I know it was mentioned by a member of the public, it is former Director Sharp's company. This is a national company, a national organization that does tremendous work, and I think it is actually a benefit to the city that there is probably not a single person on this earth that knows our transportation system better than Ryan Sharp. So bringing him in, in the event that we need him specifically for Willow Avenue redesign, any Vision Zero work, our curbside management, he was the author of a number of those initiatives, and bringing him in to add support is, we think, only a benefit to the city and the Transportation Department.
Do we not have, do we not have faith in our current staffing, that they have enough knowledge on those projects?
No, we absolutely do, but I think, like, just like we have on-call engineers, that does not implicate our current engineering department that they don't have the capacity or the ability to do that. I think this is added support to ensure that we are doing these as well as we absolutely can.
So could you explain what that added support looks like, though? What I'm confused about is that it's a firm to come in and kind of oversee a project? Is it a firm, is it redundancy where we'll have a firm overseeing a project, and then this firm overseeing that firm? Like, what, kind of walk me through a situation.
It's support. Again, it's no different, we have a corporation council's office, and we oftentimes hire outside counsel to add support or manage a specific project area. This is the same kind of situation, similar when we have different engineering firms, Michael Baker is on here, you can list through, I listed a few projects that I think would be relevant to this firm, and that's what our intention is when they come to pass, that we have added support for all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Ramos?
Yeah. I think a lot of the things you just indicated, Director, to the councilman's question, a lot of things that we voted, that the council majority voted on last contract, what Kimley-Horn is supposed to be doing. And I think this is a redundancy. It almost seems like the homeboy hookup, and I think we want to try and get away from those things as we move forward with our city. It is definitely redundancy. I think a majority of the city, when we had the first time that reimagining one of our interior streets in Hoboken, we had a meeting at Wallace School about that, I think people were pretty upset about the way that was happening. So I don't think the public sentiment has changed with that aspect and touching some of our interior streets in Hoboken. So I think it's redundant, it seems like a hookup for someone who just left, and I think those are things that we want to try and get away from, or the appearance of moving that forward. I think, and the Kimley-Horn contract was significant in accomplishing a lot of the things that you just stated, looking for this firm to do. I think we have a title that we never really had before, and not just this department, a lot of departments. We had a parking director, then we added an assistant parking director. Now we have consultant on top of consultant. Let's try and get away from that. We know we're gonna have a budget, a budget crisis this year some way, somehow. So I think we could start trying to address those issues where we can in the next few meetings, so that way we're not here in June or July trying to make cuts that we really can't make because the budget's too far gone at that point. So, I think we should vote no on this tonight.
Council President? I, yeah, I mean, I, I guess my view is, I actually like Ryan, I liked a lot, not suggesting that either any of my colleagues dislike him, I think he added a lot of value. I think having an on-call contract is just not, is not, this isn't the time for that, right? We have to, we just, and we didn't have a unanimous vote on the Kimley-Horn increase and expansion. I feel very strongly about the importance of that contract, but I just feel like we need that to move forward, we need to have more deliverables, and we need to have a clear understanding as to what, if any, additional support that we need. So, I don't want to vote yes on this tonight, but I'm happy to consider if we need to have, you know, we have a million different projects, and if we need some additional services at a later date, let's have a more precise contract, not just these, not just an open contract with a former employee. We have really great people, and we need to give them the bandwidth to do their job. I have a lot of faith in Jesse, I have a lot of faith in Greg Franchese, and the people in that group, and I just think, like, let's move the ball forward, and when we need specifically something from Alta, then we bring them in.
Council President?
Councilman Cohen?
Just a thought on this, is that, I mean, I think these are all valid points, but something to keep in mind is that when you have an issue, and you have familiarity with the project, and you have familiarity with the people involved in the project, you can get more accomplished with a half an hour conversation with that person than you could by hiring a new outside consultant, get them up to speed, explain to them what's been going on, explain to them the history, and you're actually saving money by being able to have the benefit of all that knowledge and expertise. Ryan Sharp was here, I think, 12, 15 years, he designed a lot of these projects, he worked on them, and, you know, we all celebrated his accomplishments and contributions, thank the benefits of having someone like that. You know, at my, at my law firm, often you'll have senior people involved for short periods of time because they've dealt with that matter before, and they can get done in a half an hour, would it take a junior person who doesn't have the background weeks to figure out because they've dealt with this a zillion times? So I think the concept of having someone with Ryan's expertise on call is a cost savings to the city. So, I mean, I think that it would be a benefit, I don't know if it's gonna have the support, but I think the idea is a good one.
What if we just reduced it?
I was.
Sorry, go ahead.
Councilman President?
Thank you, Council President. If I just do a quick calculation here, and I'm just gonna take an average of what they, 390 to 110, and I use 300 as a number, divided, 50,000 divided 300, it's 166 hours to phone a friend. We're gonna talk to Mr. Sharp or his firm 166 hours? That's a lot. So, for me-
So for me, I think, I echo the responses already of the redundancy. I voted no for Kimley-Horn. A lot of this stuff is listed there. We have consummate professionals inside the Parking and Transportation Committee, and actually, it's a chance for some of our people to rise up and get a chance to move into leadership potentially, because they've been under the tutelage of our ex-employee. So I can't support this. If we want to phone a friend, I mean, I think Councilman Fisher was just going to recommend we move it down in price, but I think we'd have to reintroduce. But, I mean, I just think overall...
We can amend on the fly.
For resolution, we don't.
You know, I'd entertain that, but as of right now, $50,000, no way.
Council President? I was going to suggest, maybe, Councilman Fisher, to your point, would you feel more comfortable if this was reduced down to more of an introductory level, similar to some of our legal contracts? Because I think there are efficiencies with having someone so knowledgeable, and I would point out, we do continue to have a vacancy in our Director of Transportation, so I don't see this as a redundancy. I see there's still a tremendous amount of work happening in the Transportation Department, and I want them to be able to handle that volume. So perhaps we could introduce this at $20,000 and go from there, and that would be more commensurate with some of the contracts.
How about 15?
15 works for me.
I'll vote yes on 15.
15 works. Call it a deal.
Council President? Yes, Councilman?
Councilwoman Jabour brought up a good point. Director, where are we on the director's position for the Transportation and Parking Utility?
We're in the process of final interviews.
I'm sorry?
We're in the process of final interviews.
Okay. Do we have multiple applicants for that, or?
There's over 40 applicants.
Forty?
So, Council President?
Yep.
Second bite? So if we're...
Let's just wait.
Well, wait. If we have 40 applicants, and we're going to hire a director, what do we need the old director for? Like, I mean, they're professionals, and we're going to interview, and they're going to be very, everybody's chomping at the bit in some of the conversations I've had with people in Director of Transportation and Parking, that Hoboken is a model city. So you get this on the resume, it's a huge thing. So I imagine of those 40 people that are interviewing, somebody's going to be pretty much equal or on par, very close to our ex-employee. So therefore, we're going to be asked to vote on...
Familiar with government hiring practices, I don't expect that will be in a timely way. Case in point, how long has it been that that position has been vacant thus far, business administrator?
This last summer. Yeah, Kevin knows better than I do. Last summer.
So I would rather not see, for example, I know that there's a Vision Zero Task Force meeting that's been scheduled, and I hate to lose any of the expertise that could be accomplished by ensuring you have somebody with as much of a background as Ryan Sharp does. I think we move forward at the $15,000 mark, if that's agreeable to Councilman Fisher.
If I can, if I can add to that, you know, if we do have a director onboard within the next few months, we would want that person to hit the ground running. What better resource to have than his or her predecessor to be able to call and seek advice on, not to knock the, any of the staff.
I agree.
I've been in this position before, taking, you know, a position at, whether it be a new company, and to be able to call the person who sat in seat before, just to cut through some of the noise and get to the point, and really understand, you know, what's in front of you is invaluable, and I think cost-saving. So I'd support, you know, reducing it down so that we have, you know, something, that ability there. I think it would be an efficiency that would be created.
Can I just add as one point? Let's not act here, like, we all like Ryan, right? We all had a great work relationship with him, I know I did personally. Well, let's not act he did everything by himself, right? He had Assistant Director Aviles doing a lot of the work, we have Jesse now doing a lot of the work there, we have Olga Garcia doing a lot of the work there. So we have former Director Diana Aviles, who's still in the department here with us, working with us.
She's on maternity.
But she's still coming back to the building, right, I hope?
Not until March.
But soon enough.
Yeah.
Congratulations to her, and congratulations to Jennifer Gonzalez as well, who gave you a birthday yesterday. Congratulations to everyone. But we do have people in-house that, unless they have amnesia the next couple of months, they know the job as well, right? So let's think about the budget in mind, let's think about that first, before we make these types of decisions, whether it's five, 10, 15, because we fought over last year, $5,000 here, $15,000 there, $30,000 here, so let's keep all that in mind as we move this forward. We have people in-house that, unless they have amnesia tomorrow, will be okay.
So, Corporation Counsel, I mean, I see this, there's two separate issues here. There's, there are those who have expressed a concern about going back and with, and employing Mr. Ryan Sharp, and then there was the issue of how much we spend, and why would we, you know, do we need someone in that role? I would like to get the first question put to bed, if that's, you know...
There's no rule, regulation, or law that prohibits you from rehiring Mr. Sharp. In some instances, when a city...
I just want to be clear, we're not rehiring. Right? I just want to...
Exactly. It's just that, and it was described, not intentionally, someone said, "This is Ryan Sharp's firm." Mr. Sharp is not the president of this firm, he is an employee of an entity, and he probably won't be doing the only work that this firm will be providing. But anyway, is there a motion?
But let's not forget, look, just one more thing, right? This firm's never done work with the city of Hoboken before, right? Never. Zero, right? Hoboken's how many years old? 100-plus years old, right? Firm never did work. Former director goes there, all of a sudden, contract for that firm shows up. That's all, no coincidence here, folks, we're all good.
Council President?
No, no, I'm just...
No one's hiding the ball, they're saying he has, they have specific knowledge, which is helpful.
But so did former Director Ian Sax, right? So did people who have moved out of that department, there are people currently in that department, they all have the same knowledge base as former Director Sharp. So what's the reasoning behind hiring a firm who now employs him for $50,000? If we have issues or concerns, I know Ryan expressed to me very succinctly, "If you ever need anything, Michael, don't hesitate to call me." He didn't say, "Michael, if you ever need anything, you could call me at a fee," right? He said, "If we have an issue in Hoboken, don't hesitate to call them." So I think it's really, I think it's really apparent what's going on here, right?
And if we already adopted a budget, and this conversation was happening then, and we were in a better place, as opposed to this place, maybe I would be a favor of, that's my own.
Council President, could we move forward with the motion to amend at $15,000?
Is there, is there a motion to amend?
Motion to amend a $15,000 contract.
Second.
Second?
Joe did. Joe seconded.
Joe seconded.
$15,000?
Amending it from 50 to 15.
15. Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Phone a friend? No.
How cute.
Cintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
No.
Mr. Russo?
Absolutely not.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Okay.
So it passes?
Yes. Pass, Pat.
So now there's a vote on the resolution as amended.
Mr. Cohen?
That was a vote.
That was a motion to amend.
No.
No, we don't have to make a motion to amend a resolution.
Okay. We changed, just changed the number to 15,000.
Yes.
As amended, is what I should have said. Yep, okay.
Mr. President, it's your meeting to run, you're running the way you need to.
I want to vote more often. Earn your money, speaking of which. So that's it for resolutions.
Public portion.
That was the public portion. Actually, with regard to petitions and communications...
Oh, yeah.
I know we don't, I have a question with regard to it. I noticed in the, that the, on the city's website, it indicates that Marty Anderson was appointed as an alternate for the planning board. On the document, the piece of paper indicating the petition and communication from the mayor's office did not include Marty Anderson as a, you know, I, so, we need to clarify that. This is not something we're voting on, so it doesn't, nothing we're doing here tonight will change the fact, but if it's inconsistent, we got to figure out which one is correct. And I believe it was intended that he was going to be appointed as an alternate, but it's not... Are you... Oh, oh, let me see. Oh, okay, it's on the back. As Roseanne, Roseanne O'Danah would say, never mind. Okay, so we're to the public portion.
You want to, you want to do that new business resolution? Why do I have to laugh at the public portion?
We were going to wait till, wait till new business, for the new business.
All right.
It's, there's a CA resolution that we'll all learn about in probably a half an hour. Anthony Kozakowski.
What happened?
Oh. It's, yeah. No, it's about work hours.
That was, that was quite impressive, you got my name right, I see why I let you run the meetings. Thank you. This has been my first city council meeting, and it's been kind of a wild experience, so just thank you for letting me speak. The reason that I'm here tonight is because we all know Hoboken's a model city, and we know it's been that way for a long time, and I want to thank you guys for helping us keep it that way. In 2017, Amazon purchased Whole Foods, and it's not covert that they did so to transfer their digital enterprise to the ground roots level. Since then, hundreds of health food stores around America have had to shut down. Forgive me if I get emotional. My son plays with the owner of Food Basic on Second Street. That store means so much to this community, and so much to the health of everybody here. Whole Foods has a very simple business model. They sell substandard health food products at health food prices. They already have a store in Weehawken, they have a store in downtown Jersey City. They are Goliath, attempting to take over food commerce in our world. I'm begging you for the opportunity to tell them not in our backyard. That store has been here for 25 years. They sell amazing products. I've just found out about this the other day, I found out that there's other local business leaders that are very upset about this Whole Foods coming here. I'm begging you, please give me an opportunity before the final resolution is passed to let Behemoth come into our town, to give me the time to round up a petition of Hoboken citizens. Every single person that I've talked to about this is absolutely outraged that this store is coming here. We don't need it in Hoboken, maybe they need it in Bayonne, maybe they need it in Jersey City. Hoboken is doing fantastic. I believe in the bottom of my heart that whenever anybody came to this board, they did sort of make this a better city. This is a monumental moment. The landscape of America is changing, the landscape of our world is changing. Don't let them corrupt this town with big business crushing our home-owned businesses. Please, just give me a chance to get a petition together so that you could hear the voice of the citizens in Hoboken. I don't know if you have to vote on it, I don't know how that works, but what can we do?
I mean, this body that will not vote on whether a private landlord can lease space to a supermarket, or, you know, this supermarket or that supermarket, there will, there will likely be a site plan approval, the planning board, which is a proceeding that you can participate in and express your views, but, you know, there are limitations on how much government can dictate what a landlord wants, you know, who a landlord, if it's zone commercial and it's on our commercial strip, and they want to lease it to a certain person, you know, we, there are, you know, there are limits to what we can do to stop it, if that's what we were inclined to do.
All right. Is there, so there's nothing that could be done?
Well, I mean, the planning board, there will, there will be a site plan approval for it at the planning board.
They're the right body to go to.
And you would go there and say, "Please, don't approve this use in this location."
And, and do you know, do you know if it's been passed up?
It hasn't, I don't even know that it's being applied. I know it's not on the agenda of the planning board, because I, I serve on that. So if you want, if you give Jerry...
Give your contact information.
Your phone number or an email address, I will be happy to get you in touch with Pat Carcone, who is our secretary of the planning board, and she could tell you it's a matter of public record, you know, whether an application has been submitted, and when it will be heard, and so forth, so that you'll be able to, you know, prepare.
Thanks. I know this, I know this is a weird request, just have her text me so I know it's hers, because sometimes I don't answer the phone, I just want to make sure.
I'll make sure I have your card, so I'll make sure to follow up.
Guys, I really appreciate this, thank you so much.
Council President, just, just, my understanding is, it's a Whole Foods deli, it's not a health food store, this one is just like a daily convenience prepared food store, so I don't know enough about it, but it's something you might want to look at, it's called Whole Foods Daily, is what their concept is.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'll definitely look into that, but I know that there's a lot of local businesses that are outraged, so I don't think it's just a regular deli.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, I really appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thank you. Liz Nidoy, are you, you're done?
I've got a piece of paper.
Okay. Enrique Herrera.
Thank you. Hello, Council, my name is Enrique Herrera. I actually wanted to just make a couple of, or at least talk about some sense of a deliberation in the curriculum of our school system. The Prussian school model didn't necessarily address certain issues that plagued the community, which is pretty much pedophilia. Oedipus, electric, complex, and exploitation, subjugation, education, and discipline, with the extrapolation of that curriculum, putting it in our school system from the moment kids are born to the moment they die as a preventative measure, to actually address the concept of that curriculum, is that when you're a kid, you don't really, you aren't educated on, on the behavior of you being conscious, confused, and horny, frankly. And because that isn't addressed professionally, and usually rests upon the parents to teach the kids on, like, type of freedom that is the case, that is where the Prussian school model left that door open for pedophiles to groom our kids and stuff like that. So because that curriculum is being addressed, I myself am very outstanding on social media on that issue, that's one of my thesis points, I think I've even sent the Board of Education a layout of what that curriculum can be in a discreet and with haste manner. That in itself prevents any type of pedophilia from entering our kids' minds, because they would have an understanding of what being conscious is before someone touches them, frankly. And that is the point of the curriculum that I present and I speak about. Coming from a strict family, you don't really have a lot of things to work with, much like, if you come from a community background, your parents pretty much leave you out with your friends, and you have more to work with in terms of being conscious or exploring who you are throughout your life. Whether or not you commit to illegal activity or anything like that as a kid, and whether or not that dredges, that becomes a dredging upon your scandals of your youth or whatever, to incorporate any type of preventative measure into the curriculum of our school system, involving edible behaviors that our community exhibits, you know, involving any type of exclusion or banishment of a kid for being weird, et cetera, et cetera, or even kids who are already exploited and subjugated to domestic servitude by their parents who have already molested them, in secret, and usually involves initiation into secret societies and stuff like that. In terms of parenting, I'm not necessarily discounting your ability to lead your children or anything like that, but because none of us experienced that curriculum as well, that Oedipus, electric, complex, and exploitation curriculum, we are susceptible to the same problems in terms of someone dredging upon the scandals of our youth, and so on and so forth. That in itself brought about one of the worst cases of pedophilia in our generation, where everyone has an Epstein device that communicates, and you get a number finger magnet, and you're in the bed of somebody else. That's something that I've already exposed, and I've already exposed that Board of Education system in the state of New Jersey. That was, this was one of the worst towns, along with Mettushen and Trenton and New Brunswick, where the school system's there, and if you're not a pedophilia ville, you're a prostitution town, where you've already encouraged kids to work on a numbered system, where it says Z123, you know, and it involves numbers, fingers, and magnets, which involves Neuralink technology, which is something I've already brought up. I don't know if you know this, but I've given the mayor a copy of my book along with, encouraged people to read up on what I've written about. It's called The Plot of the Story. Uh, it involves the magnetic material being in a character's mind, gearing him toward decisions that would later be used against him in life because there was always that sense of secrecy amongst that communication line. I've also exposed certain, I don't know, I, I bother Emily a lot on, on social media. Not really, but I don't really know any of you. So I'm pretty much one of those loner dudes that walked into town. I'm crashing at my aunt's house and I'm under Secret Service watch for exposing that type of communication line that plagued our schools with plagiarism and plagued the dating scene with, with that, um, said, exposing any type of Neuralink addiction where you are all in real-time communication mode and it's a silent disco where I'm a third party of, and it's something that you can't bring up because it's such an off-putting topic. My approach would be with discreet and with haste measures. Where if you can demagnetize yourselves from that technology, please do. If it's already engulfed the community where illegal activity has surfaced and you can't do anything about it and you're just sitting there watching people get everything, it's not going to work. We must move on from that topic. Secondly, um, to be numbered out, to be anti-stalked out of society means that you know where I am, so you're not there. Uh, I've experienced this with Ravi and I don't know if Nora, is Nora the, the, uh, still the constituent worker there? That woman blocked me on everything and told me never come here. So I literally did the best I could in terms of addressing the concerns that I had involving the expose of the technology in question. I exposed for the students and faculty to stop communicating with each other and molesting each other wirelessly. And, um, that in itself did not do anything for my image in this town outside of me being approached by psych wards and stuff like that. Which I've deemed Schrodinger's Delusion Deliberation that I'm allowed to have under the First Amendment of the United States. My freedom of expression has been violated by being illegitimized. You can even see it on my page. I don't know if it's on threads only, but if you, I, I don't want to take too much time. But, um, I've been shadow banned to the degree where people don't even communicate with me on social media. And whenever I trust any kind of conversation, it's just brushed off as a disguise a schizophrenic, which I proved I was not. That being said, thank you for listening to me and I hope that I can communicate with any Board of Education members on the, on the curriculum that I proposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herrera.
I've been, you can sit down, sir. I've been teaching 28 years now. I have never heard the curriculum you're speaking of tonight. There's a curriculum that you're saying does not, we're not taught, whatever you're talking about. We are not taught the curriculum. What you're saying, it's not happening in my school district anyway. No, I'm not going to push back either, but I, I, I'm in curriculum meetings. What you're saying is not happening, or I've never been exposed to in 28 years.
Absolutely.
So that, that's it. We'll leave it at that. You had your time. I responded back. Never heard of it.
No, it doesn't work that way. Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Jill Singleton?
Oh, automatic. Hello.
It will move for you, Jill.
Hi, everyone. Jill Singleton, 1311 Garden Street. Um, I'm here to talk to you about a very serious rat problem we have in our city. And this is not just uptown, but it's everywhere. I've heard it said from several members on council that we used to have a problem in neighborhood X, but we don't have it anymore. To me, friends, that's like saying if we had lice on this side of the head, but we got rid of it last month, we only have lice on this side of the head. It doesn't make any sense. A rat problem anywhere in Hoboken is a rat problem citywide. Now, we have a rat problem because we have a garbage problem. Get rid of the garbage, get rid of the rats. New garbage laws mean nothing without enforcement and accountability. A walk around our neighborhood on any given day or night will show an abundance of garbage overflowing from garbage cans or left on the sidewalk without even an attempt to put them into a container in the first place. The number of cans relative to the number of units and households is entirely out of whack. As an example, the 50-plus condos on 14th Street between Garden and Park have at most 10 cans between them to contain all of their garbage. This condo complex is a routine and horrific offender of our garbage laws, contributing significantly to the rat crisis we are experiencing. We've been told that inspections have taken place and that summonses have been given out, yet the problem persists. We fail to understand why these buildings, with the exception of the corner properties maybe, have the right to store their garbage on Garden and Park instead of in front of their own properties like everyone else has to. This creates an out-of-sight, out-of-mind mentality and invites the rats closer to our homes where the garbage is locating. Moving the containers to the front of their properties achieves several things. One, it keeps the garbage off of other people's blocks. Two, it forces the condo owners to see their garbage daily and to make sure that it's in the container, thereby increasing the likelihood that they will actually get it into the can in the first place. And it makes compliance easier because it's much easier than to figure out who the offenders are. And perhaps most importantly, it allows for their garbage to be picked up six days a week instead of three. Because on 14th Street, it's picked up six days a week. So it makes no sense for garbage on 14th Street to be stored on Garden and Park. Barbay is another obvious and egregious offender. With rat burrows throughout their property, a streetery that cannot be lifted and cleaned, and an ever-present alley full of overflowing food-related refuse, this restaurant has got to be brought into compliance immediately. Incidentally, the streetery itself sits along a snow emergency route, defying logic on its own. Shepherd and Knucklehead is another frequent offender on Willow Avenue. In a recent walk-around, we heard from a woman who lives at 1319 Willow. She thanked us for our efforts and shared that she feels like she's living in absolute squalor and that she cannot invite people over to her home because of the rats that traverse her doorway on a regular basis. We've talked to people who are afraid to leave their homes because of rats, people in tears, people who no longer go out for morning runs because of rats, people who are suffering serious anxiety because of rats, and people who cannot enjoy their backyards because of rats. Getting rid of this rat infestation is going to take hard work. It's going to take perseverance. But it will only improve if the city takes the lead and lends resources and teeth to compliance and accountability issues. Getting rid of rats takes science. Defining a viable ratio of garbage cans to households requires basic math. Achieving compliance with garbage laws requires consistent enforcement. An understanding our town will not maintain its value or reputation when we are garbage and rat-infested takes common sense. It makes me sad that our emails go unanswered. It frustrates me that when we do get responses, they indicate a more of the same strategy that is not working. I was absolutely dismayed when a city employee said we residents have misunderstood that the city is only responsible for rodent control in the parks and sewers and that all the other rats are our problems to take care of. A sort of blame the victim mentality. That was the response that we got, even when the city's own website says that rodent control takes coordinated effort and leadership. There must be some equivalent to Maslow's hierarchy of needs regarding city planning and management. And it would certainly make sense that ensuring clean streets and public health would be at the base of that pyramid. Surely, we can do better. Surely, we should demand better of ourselves, our businesses, our residents and our council. We need you to take action before it's too late, before the crisis becomes even more dire with rats damaging our buildings, spreading disease and causing injury to children and families. To finish up, I'll end with a question, a very simple question we raised in an email that went unanswered last week. At a minimum, can sanitation inspectors or other hired individuals conduct an inspection on garbage nights instead of only once per week? When we were together, Tiffany, you indicated that the city would actually be willing to pay for more vigilant inspection protocols. When can we see that happen? Weekly is not enough. Ideally, these should really be happening daily until the problem is sufficiently mitigated. And so we ask for this to take place now. Time is of the essence. Please, we implore you, protect our city. Get rid of the garbage. Get rid of the rats.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Ms. Alexandra Black?
Hi, Alex Black, 1307 Garden. Um, I'm here again for the same reason. Tiffany, I know there was an email sent out. I know some of you are also on the email. It went unanswered. We still have no reply to any of our concerns. Any, did any of you read the email? Any feedback? No?
This is not a back and forth.
I understand it's not a back and forth, but I've been, this is like the third time I'm here for the same reason and I have no answers via email or any, any other way. So how else can I get some answers to the stuff that we're sending out to you guys?
Who sent out the last email?
I'm sorry?
Just who sent out the last email?
Jill, Kelly, and there were three actually that went and no one answered.
Only someone. Okay, go ahead.
To be clear, the 20921314th Street metal structure that was supposed to remove months ago, still there. It also doesn't belong to 1319 Park. So I don't understand why the city can't just go and take it. Why are we waiting for 209213 to do what they're supposed to be doing? They said they were going to do and they haven't done yet. It's in front of, not their property. No reply. Okay. Also, there's tons of resolutions here. The last time I was here, the same thing. There are no resolutions in how we are focusing on the rat problem that Hoboken has right now. Not one person, not one council person has put anything in writing with this. Is there, are we doing anything about it or are we just going to let them multiply? As they have been, Tiffany, I reached out to you February of 2023, the first time. It's, it's going to be two years of this. I have videos, I have pictures, I, I've sent addresses. I, I don't know what else to do. It's not my job. My job is to pay my taxes. I pay my taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Black.
Council President?
Yes.
Director, I asked the question last time at our meeting. Where are we with a lot of the concerns? Where are we with follow-up with a lot of those things? And where are we with issuing summonses and fines for those that are not in compliance?
So I, this is an area that continues to be of discussion. I know Councilwoman Fisher was involved in a conversation. She and I spoke, what, two, three days ago? You and I spoke two or three days ago on some of these issues. And it is, is something that continues to be addressed. It's been addressed in those specific areas going back to end of November, early December. And it continues to be addressed both by in-house inspectors, outside paramount contractors who are doing baiting of sewers, things like that in that specific area.
Specifically, how many summonses have been issued to the-
I don't have that on top of my head.
Can you get that to us? Because I, I think there are multiple issues that are going on in the city and I'll just use this one as the example, where we try to get really tough on a situation and we would like to see follow-through with certain things. And then it's always, well, we'll give them one more week or we'll check one more time. And I think we're beyond that at this point. So if there aren't summonses being issued, I think we need to start issuing them. Secondarily, has the city spoken to the owners at Shepherd and Knucklehead and Barbs?
I have not, but I, I can speak. I know that there are staff that have done that. Just to your first point, Councilman, and I, I don't disagree with you and I am all for trying to blitz this with inspections and making sure people are in compliance. And I think there's two points to that. One is, as Councilwoman Fisher and I spoke to, there's a registered agent piece of it where we've issued summonses to buildings that don't have registered agents and the court has to by law dismiss those tickets because they, we can't write a summons to an organization or an entity. They have to be written to an individual. So that's, we have an ordinance on the books and we're working on ways to try to better enforce that. It is, it is difficult. It is challenging and it's not an excuse. It's just the reality of, of getting someone to put their name to represent their building. The second piece is it comes to the inspection part that you referenced and, and this is not a, I think it's, it's a joint effort. There have been times where the administration has tried to enforce and someone will get a ticket and the city council is upset that that person gets a ticket and then we roll back the ordinance that we have implemented for better tickets. Right? So I'm, I, it's a balancing act and I just, if you guys, the, the eight of you are supportive of trying to find ways to better support the teams that are out there in the field overnight, because that's a majority of it. It's a late night. On a night like tonight, it's freezing cold and there are people out there. We will add more people to that. I just want to make sure that there are going to be times where people get summonses that they're not happy about. And that can't lead us to then roll back the ordinance that's going to enforce those things.
Yeah. And, and I appreciate that position and I, and I, I actually agree with you that at times that has done, that has happened. But I think where we fail is that we're not communicating enough with those individuals or those businesses to say, hey, if in fact this isn't going to happen, then you're going to start getting these summonses.
That's fair.
I mean, I, I specifically spoke to the owner of Barbs and put her in contact with the Business Alliance for a City Bin program. Right? I mean, I spoke to her. It was, it was simple. I picked up the phone and I just called her. So I know there's more that can be done and I don't want to pretend like this is the only thing on everybody's plate.
No, of course.
So I understand that timing is, is involved there, but I think we're at a point where this is now weeks, months, even years, dealing with the same problem at the same location. So I, I just, it's just one of those things that I don't want it to fall between the cracks and then two weeks from now at the next meeting, we jump back on it, we deal with it for six hours, eight hours, 10 hours, and then we forget about it again for two weeks.
Understood. And I, and I promise you it isn't and I, I appreciate Councilwoman Fisher's engagement in my office and, and I know with-
Understood.
Sanitation and constituent services and that's going to continue to happen.
Council President, Council-
Appreciate it. Thank you.
If I, can I, can I, if I can just interject for a second, just so everyone knows what has happened more recently. So before the holidays, uh, we met with, um, I met with Nora Di Benedetto, our constituent services. Nora's been very involved, Director Gonzalez, Berlin Vilkant and Dave Calmenari. Right? So you have our trash inspector, you have our health director, you have our constituent services, Director Gonzalez, who at the time was kind of pinch hitting for Director Aviles. And, and really what prompted it was two things. One was just the general urgency and where we felt like we were treading water. And two was because I was, as I said previously, we were misled by someone within the administration, not the administration, but someone who worked here saying that the Barbis, uh, streetery had been inspected. And in fact, it wasn't. It was, but it wasn't, it wasn't appropriately inspected. And I personally was offended by that because as Jill just said, I told everyone that it had been inspected because that's what I was told. So we had a meeting and we talked about all the issues in the area and came up with a general plan where Berlin committed to increased inspections. Dave Calmenari committed to increased inspections and they're different inspections. One's a trash inspection. One is like a rat burrow health inspection. We also discussed, I don't know if everyone's aware, but we've had this like vacuum of who inspects the, uh, the streeteries. It, it just really hasn't fallen anywhere. And in fact, our, um, it's kind of been sitting with our zoning office, even though our ordinance says it should sit with the health inspector. So we had a whole conversation on that. Chris Brown agreed. They were going to talk with Ann. So we were getting Berlin to take it over and do a more detailed inspection. There are some very specific things that were happening in conversations with the condos that they mentioned too. They've, they've added more, um, cans on one of them on Garden Street, the one on Willow should have been removed last week. I, I'm sorry, on Park. I don't know why. There was a focus on making sure we get this done. And there was also a focus on removing all of the garbage cans, the public city-owned garbage cans, um, in the area. So that's kind of where we left it with a sense of urgency as it relates to summonses. As, uh, as Director Freeman just mentioned, this is something that we discovered on that call that we in fact don't have registered agents for any of the condos on this block. So we can't actually issue summonses to an individual person. So again, I, something new that I learned, didn't even know that this existed in our city. And we had a group discussion that we would follow up and get the responsible agents in parallel. So we can in fact issue summonses for our lid laws because we can't issue summonses without our lid laws. An administrative snafu don't have any idea within the city who even oversees the list, which is what Director Freeman and I talked about, trying to make sure that we know where this sits because it's not unique to this location, right? We have, we amended our law a year or so ago that says anyone who doesn't have a registered agent cannot get a permit with the city. Like you can't get a construction permit, you know, whatever. But none of these condos need that, right? They're just operating, they live. And, and we can't, we can't issue summonses that have enough teeth that will hold them accountable. And that's an administrative problem within our, within our administration that we have to fix. And I wasn't aware of it until that Friday. So we had the conversation. We're still issuing the summonses. We're trying, they were trying to, or they were going to actively work with all the condo owners. There are six condos, five or six condos. We, they're managed by our household managers. Two are Red Bridge, three or four of them are La Barbara. These are people that our staff knows and they're, they were, they were committing to actively do more. That's where we left it just before the holidays. I sent a summary and this is where we are. And I know that they are doing inspections. I know that they're doing work. I don't know that they're doing it enough. I don't know why that metal structure is still there. It shouldn't have been there.
It's been gone a long time ago.
What'd you say?
Nope. That should have been gone a long time ago. It was agreed to be gone a while ago.
It was agreed and then, it was agreed and then- It was agreed, and then, it was agreed, and then it was punted till after the holidays because of the timing of it. They couldn't get someone to do it. But that's, that's where we are right now. And we have plenty of well-intended people, and to your point, Councilman, we can't take all the resources in the city just on this issue. However, it is a real issue. The neighbors have done everything, right? They have two things on their list to do. One is to constantly send pictures so it can guide our inspectors. The other is to help organize or summarize what the extermination plans are for all the people like around that donut, right? And share it with the city so we can coordinate with them. But they've done everything. Almost every neighbor has done their part to do extermination, to keep it clean. But we're, the city, not doing our part, because we're not enforcing our own laws. We're just not enforcing our own laws. And we have commitment to do so, but we're still just not doing it, right? And as of right now, Barbis, as far as I know, and I don't know if Dr. Feranti, you know, knows any different, Barbis has not been inspected. There is no possible way that that, that that streetery complies under any situation, and you know that there are rats underneath it. You can see evidence of like rats with mussels right by these little openings to go underneath it. And there's no possi, there's no way to actually see underneath that streetery, so it doesn't comply with our cleaning laws that, you know, Councilman Cohen, that remember, we spent all that time putting those cleaning laws in place. There's no way that the streetery complies with that. And so we had to figure out who is going to do the inspections and officially transfer it to Berlin, which I thought was happening. And Berlin was like, I'm, I'll do it. She's ready to do it. Ready to do it, and I just don't know if it happened.
Councilwoman, I understand, and I absolutely agree with you. What frustrates me most is I specifically, personally, put up an ordinance to remove all the decking from all the streeteries across the city of Hoboken.
If you put it up again, I will support you.
We put it up together.
I'll put it up again, and we'll support you.
Let's put it up, and let's, and we're not saying, again, I said it then, and I'll say it now. We're not saying get rid of the streeteries. Let them use their street, let them utilize that space. I have no problem with that. But they have to be able to clean under their spaces. When I spoke to Lisa from Barb's, she was more than willing to take out the decking and figure out a strategy where you could remove that decking and put it back in. I know people are willing to work with us. The problem is that there's not enough follow-up, and there's not enough for the city of Hoboken to go there and make sure that it happens. We have ordinances on our books that we could literally do work on people's property and charge them after the fact. We, as a city, could send one of our guys to remove that, that structure, that garbage structure, charge that building. It's that easy, right? I understand where you're coming from, but I'm sure you're just as frustrated as I am. But I think it needs to be said that there are, there are mechanisms at our disposal as a city that we are not utilizing, and it's getting more and more frustrated, not just for us as council people, but for the neighbors specifically. So I would hope that we could find those avenues to explore and do that within the next two weeks before we get to our next council meeting, and at least some of this is done. That's what I'm hoping for.
Me, too.
And I think that's the message in general, but specifically to the administration, so that they could utilize those tools.
I mean, the president, just, I'm sorry, very brief. Our committee is scheduled to discuss this. We got an email from Director Brown. That's one of the items on the agenda.
Great.
Great.
We have more members of the public who want to speak on this very topic.
I apologize.
So, I know, I'd like to, Debbie Olita?
Debbie Olita, 1304 Garden Street. I want to respond to some of the things that have been said here.
Could you come a little closer?
Oh, sorry.
That's fine.
Debbie Olita, 1304 Garden Street. Feel like it's in my mouth. One of the things that we are so frustrated about is exactly what Michael Russo said. There's no action. There's a lot of talk, but no action and no follow-up. Barbey, that streetery is on a snow removal street. Why do they even have that streetery? They're going to repave 13th Street. They're going to have to take it down anyway. Why can't we take it down now and wait for the, nobody's sitting out in the cold. At least take away that sand pit that they have, where all the rats are going underneath and around the tree. We have to act now, and I want, I don't want to come back here in two weeks. I'm coming every time we have a council saying the same exact thing. And for you to say that we have no resolution, why don't you put it as a resolution? We have no, we have no way to enforce the ordinance, and there's no resolution. Put, why isn't it on this agenda?
It's not legally permitted.
It's not legally permitted. It's a, we, there's no resolution because we have a requirement for condo associations to have a registered agent, to have a human, right? Sign up. And we have a, we have a law on our books that says if you don't comply, you get fined, and we're just, we're not administering that.
Able to administer it.
No, it's not that we're not able to administer that law. Like, we're just, we don't, we're not actively, I, this is, I talked about, I said to Jason, sorry, Director Freeman, two days ago, if you just give me the list of who is a registered agent, I, I will craft the letter for Corporation Council to send out to all of the other condos that don't have registered agents, because we can't, on any condo across the city, we can't issue a summons.
Well, doesn't the management company represent the homeowners?
The answer is yes, but they have to regis, they have to, they have to sign up as a registered or responsible agent so that they're basically saying they will take personal responsibility. It's a, it's a process. It's a process that's not being enforced within the city, that we and I, he and I just talked about, how do we get this enforced so that we can get all of these condo associations to actually sign someone up? We just talked about that, right?
Issue a lien against the property.
You can't. You literally, there's a whole history on this. This is not something I made up. This is something I've had five conversations on in the last two weeks, right? It's, it's like pull my hair out, or hair on fire, that we are not ensuring that we have someone on the hook that we can issue a summons citywide. I mean, that's astonishing to me. Astonishing to me. And what I didn't-
But why can't we move the garbage to 14th Street? They'd have more pickup, and they'd have to cover it, because it's in front of their house.
We don't, it's a great suggestion, by the way. It's a, not only is it a great suggestion, it's a suggestion that's been made to those condo associations, and they don't want to, well, in the past, they have, they have. And in the past, they haven't wanted to do it, all right? And so there's, there's nothing that we, I'll give you the example. On this block is 1201 to 1213, sorry, 201 to 213-
14th Street.
14th Street. There are six buildings. There's 201 and 203, then 5, then 7, then 9, and 9 through 13, 9 through 13, 9 through 11, whatever, the one on the end. So the garbage for 201, 203 is on the corner of Garden, because it's a corner property, they have their garbage on Garden, okay? The one that is 209 to 213, because it's a corner property, that condo has their garbage around the corner. 205 to 207 does not have any garbage cans in front of their building. They don't have a corner. And one of the frustrations of 201 to 203 is those people are putting their garbage in 201 to 203. That's not a city issue. That is the management of 201, 203, which is LaBarbara, who has added more garbage cans, because they don't want 205 and 207, it's not their condo to put their garbage in their garbage cans. But what, what right does the city have to intervene in that? What law allows us to intervene and force them to put their garbage in front of their property? I don't think they have that law.
Well, we have to put our garbage in front of our house, and we could, we could, if we put it out too early, if it's not in the right can with a cover, you give us, you can give us tickets. But you can't tell that condo that they have to put their garbage in front of their own house? The sanitation, it, it doesn't make sense to me.
They're just using illegally someone else's garbage, but that's not, but-
You hit it. You said the word.
Illegal.
You said the word.
No, it's not-
Illegally.
It's not illegally. It's not illegally. It's just the condo next door doesn't want them to put it. They allow it. Is it up to us to say to 205 and 207 to go through the garbage and say, I'm sorry, this garbage bag from 205 can't be in the garbage can around the corner? I, I don't know.
The sanitation department should be able to tell them where to put the garbage. They tell us. Why can't, they can't, they tell the condo, just because-
A big issue that we've had, and of residents, why residents are really upset with getting fined, is that people are putting garbage in front of other people's properties.
Yeah.
And they are being fined for it. They have it on video. Then they have to take a day off of court, of work to come to court that day. We specifically made in-court appearances as deterrents, but we can't locate the people.
But by the way, but by the way, so let's, if we overlay it-
We have the same problem on Third and Clinton, Third and Willow.
If we, if we overlay that here, if we had the ability to issue a summons to 201, 203, because they have overflowing garbage, they would be more incented to fix it, or to force 205 do their own security, and force 205, 207 to have their own garbage in front, right? They would do that. I mean, we can come up with, I don't know that we can come up with a law that says you can't, they can't put it on the side of their property. I mean-
Allow it. It doesn't matter whether-
Well, didn't, the city provided us with garbage cans with lids. So can't you provide garbage cans with lids that go in front of their condo? I mean, their residents, because they're a condo, you have to get the, no?
They are welcome to get a garbage can with a lid when-
As a matter of fact, we just gave-
Or replace them.
Yeah.
Right. Well, that's a bus stop, too, isn't it? Is this, you're, I'm talking about, not the 14th Street, but the-
Guys, the city, the city sets regulations pertaining to garbage-
And where it goes.
-all the time. I mean, I don't know what we're talking about here. Of course, we have every ability to set those regulations. We have that ability. Of course we do. We've done it. We did it when we changed our ordinance about making sure that all the garbage cans were lidded. We did that. We were allowed to do that. Corporation Council's office said, yes, this is a great, this is a great law. You guys could pass it, bring it down to the council.
That's great. So we're-
And that kind of-
There are things that we need to do that are a little bit outside the box to make sure that there's compliance. We could set, we could set a number of regulations.
We can't issue a summons. Until we can issue a summons, we can't, it doesn't matter if you change the law.
Take this to the subcommittee, or, I mean, I'm-
We should have a set, we should have, if people are willing, let's just have like a committee of four people to help solve this, because this-
I have the same issue in Third.
Yeah. This is a, a-
An ad hoc?
Yeah. Just, I, there are four, there are four council members on that email. I don't remember who I put on. Emily, you're, Ruben, are you on it, Mike? Maybe the four of us, just because we're on the email. If you guys are okay, we'll just have a call with the four of us.
That's fine.
All right.
I'm putting my last few minutes over to Alex.
I just said this before. The metal structure that we're talking about-
Nora said it's being removed this week.
Is in front of not their property. It's not their property. It's, the city could just come and literally take it. We don't have to wait for them or give them summonses. Take it. It's not theirs. It's in front of 1319 that the city broke into and decided that you can't even put rat traps in there because it's going to collapse. So this metal structure, hi, sorry. The metal, the metal structure-
Councilwoman Javora said that Nora said it's being moved this week.
It's being removed this week, according to Nora. I checked in with her today about this.
It was being moved two months ago.
I'm telling you what I am, my understanding. Nora is coordinating a lot of this, and I trust that she has that information.
My point is, that structure is not in front of the condo's property. It's somebody else's property. So they, all this time, they've been putting garbage where it doesn't belong to them, to any of those condos. They have their own front gates. Or add more garbage pickup. We used to have more garbage picking in this town. Like, three years ago, we got rid of one, one day, and all of a sudden, we have rats. Like, put something in the resolution for this. You know, I'm all for streeteries. I like to eat outside. We don't need streeteries in the winter. Do what New York did. Put, in the summer, that way also the sweeper could come and clean the streets properly. This isn't hard. And if we can't control, control our garbage in the city, we can't run a city. I'm sorry. It's, it's basic. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ernest Boyd?
I'm back again. Stuff your tired of my face. I can't do this extemporaneously this time. I need to read from notes. But, so, I'm sure you are all, well, some of you are quite aware that we got a 3% raise this time in Marineview. I don't know if that's legal. It's, and people in Marineview are unsure if that's legal, because it still seems as though the management is acting as though they are still on the pilot, because that raise came in January. And if, if it's true-
Rent increase, when you say a raise?
Yeah, I'm sorry, a rent increase. Yes. No, forgive me, forgive me. A rent increase. We got a notice.
For giving us a raise. We're all excited.
We got a rent increase of 3%, and a notice. Many did not pay it, because it doesn't seem legal, because it doesn't seem as though they're abiding by the rent laws of Hoboken, number one. Number two, I'd like to know if they in fact did register with the city for rent control. No, they have not yet. Okay. Number three, are they being fined? I think Bala said that they are. Okay, so that's number, that's number three. And lastly, this dovetails with the conversation last night about workforce housing. There are, I've been going around knocking on doors, and I don't have specific proof, except for one apartment that was left open. There's no one in there. It does seem to me that between 5% and 10% of Marineview Plaza is being warehoused. And when I say it seems to me, it's because there's nobody home, and there's only one lock on the door, which is a flimsy lock. The other top lock is often covered up. So I don't know, and often, there are notices under the door that you can see have been there, probably for some weeks, because those were the notices that were delivered some time ago. So my last question, I don't want to take up too much time, is, I'm willing to do it, but I know Mayor Bala mentioned that the, that there's a 60-day notice of when an apartment goes into that warehousing kind of limbo and start, and begins to violate the law. Who is in fact in charge of that? Because if we're talking about, about workforce housing, those in the city who work for the city, police officers, firemen, teachers, this is between, probably something between 20 and at least 40 apartments are vacant and not being rented. So how can we, as Marineview tenants, how can we help you, help us, make sure that those units are rented to those who they should be rented to? That's, that's my last question. And I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna stay here any longer. I can reach out, I can reach out to Councilman President Zano, because he is my councilman. Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Yeah, Ernest, I can, I can answer a couple things for you. So there'll be some communication from the administration. We had a meeting last week about this, the 3% thing. I spent most of New Year's Day talking with your, with your neighbors. There's people that paid no increase as per what the tenant advocate had recommended. One of the key things you have to remember is, we, it's really difficult, and if you can help us with this message, it's difficult for us to give financial advice. We're not allowed to. However, the tenant advocate is there for you. There was people, I understand, on the click pay, that suddenly it was not there on D31, suddenly Jan 1, it was there, and like, do you want to pay it? Yes or no? Based upon what the rent office has told us, or at least advised, that if you are not registered for rent control, you cannot raise the rent. So that's my understanding from what has been sent down, and I think the mayor has sent out a few letters from all of us. Just bear with us, because we know what happened last year. It took us until March to kind of get to some agreement. All of us up here, you know, the communication is not just one of us, it's all of us. And there is something that will be coming forward, that either we get it under your door, or we'll, you know, I'll call you, and we can, we can organize from that standpoint. But you haven't gotten a notice, it's just a fact of, there's some little nuances, and we have to take one thing at a time. The warehousing issue that people are looking at, I think we need to take care of the bigger issue for everybody first, the tenants, to take the temperature down and make sure, hey, we got your back. So just bear with us for a little bit, and you should have some communication in the next, I'd say, longest a week. But I'll follow up with the administration tomorrow morning.
I'll send an email. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ernest. Patricia Waiters?
Can you put it to my sides? Put it, put it down. That's you controlling this?
No.
Oh, all right. Oh, all right.
You can turn it.
And I promise to stay real relaxed because I want y'all to take me serious. I promise, but really take me serious. First, let me start with saying I want to trust you, Paul, what you just demonstrated sounds so good because seemed like we being impacted with that in Marineview, I mean, what Marineview going through in church towels. But I, lo and behold, this one here, I trust him. So I'm not going to even speak on that because I'm quite sure you got it under control. So this is for everybody in TV land and church towels, he got it under control. I don't even want to go there with that. Okay, with respect to the Whole Foods, I'm just, and I do these in my agenda, I'm trying to get organized here. I ran outside to talk to them briefly. Y'all know I advocate for everybody, at least 4,000 people know that. I want to get, say that again, but real slow, 4,000 people. You know why I'm saying that? Because those people confiding in me and they vote for me all the time, all the time. I'm still warning people and telling people, I'm hearing the same stories, we have rats, we have, oh, no parking, I could go on forever. We have a lot of issues in Hoboken. The only scary thing is when you got three councilor large seats up and the mayor seat up, it's hard to trust. It's really hard to trust y'all because some of the same ones that win, the minute they win, and I remember this one year like crazy, like you was pouring salt in the people's room, we went from a $5 parking fee to $50. You know how bad that looked? Right after somebody ran outside and voted for you and they said, and y'all promised, I'll make all of these campaign, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that, from $5 to $50. We don't want to hear it, we got the majority, we got the control of the council, this is what it's gonna be. I wish I could stay this calm when I'm in the street and shop, Rite, Rite Aid, wherever, and people said, Pat Waiters, guess what happened? And always come to me to be that fighter, and then some say, stop letting them use you, you're gonna get this, this, this. I'm gonna continue to do what I do. That's why I'm asking you, calm, cool and collectively, just follow me and hear me out. All I want to know with respect to the chain of command, the real full chain of command, just act like we any other municipality, when it comes down to reprimanding directors and big department heads, who do we go to? And please don't say Mayor Bala. Who do we go to with the chain of command? I don't mean if a cop do something right now and it's official misconduct, y'all tell us to go to IAD, okay? If we not satisfied with our mayor, this is where I need my 4,000 people, I hope y'all watching, I need y'all to get a mayor then that will hold his job to the fullest. We need to hold him accountable to his job. Now, the mayor make these appointments and we have issues with these directors, they solely get away with it, which is called what, Jason? Abuse of authority. They do what they want unethical because it's not breaking the law, it's just unethical because I've been appointed to this position and I'm not going to be touched or moved. So now they stays there another four or five years and hurt other families when you could have prevented and stopped it the first time it happened. But when you got people in positions that was politically appointed there, it's a disaster waiting to happen. And it's not fair. I want to know who, and I'm serious, who do I go to? I'm coming to all nine of you council members, I'm talking to Corporation Council, who do we go to? Because the behavior that's being, even when Ryan Sharp wouldn't answer us back, I would come up here and complain, don't come after me and threaten me and my family because I'm gonna complain, because I'm gonna continue to complain till I get justice. With that being said, Joe Biden Jr., you're not above the law. Jason Freeman, you're not above the law. Ravi Bala, you're not above the law. And any other government official that think you could abuse your authority, you are not above the law. Ryan Sharp, you're not above the law. Michael Kraus, huh, you're not above the law. I know you guys received complaints with some serious violations from them people I just named and they still in office. So I'm closing out tonight saying this and I'm serious, I don't care what election is approaching, it don't look good when we see our mayor let Sharp go and now bringing him back. Look at the money amounts, I circled every money amount for parking, 150,000, 130,000, 50,000. I don't care what it is, it looks ugly. It makes us look really, really bad. And I know this all about election cycle that's coming up. I'm asking people that's watching this tonight, stick by my side, I will be filing a formal complaint and I want it addressed accordingly. Please, justice council people, address it. Treat me like you treat everybody else when y'all jumped up and were steadfast when the incident happened in the park. Ravi was on the news again. They go on the news channel for everybody, don't pick and choose who you help because it become biased, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Kevin Davis.
So there is a connection between the Rodin issue and Ryan Sharp, but before I get to that, there is something I want to address. You know, it wasn't what I, I wanted to see tonight where the, the contract did get approved for Ryan Sharp's firm, but on a positive note, at least you guys reduced it 70% from $50,000 to 15, 1-5. So I liked it. I also like that the last time I came to speak about the Mishigas or the Kimley Horn contract, the vote was 6-2, at least this time was 5-3. So we're moving in the right direction of not giving the Department of Transportation a blank check for their consultants. They'll just help, you know, give them more evidence for what they want to do anyways, while acting like there's a public process. Now, the, because you guys approved the contract tonight, the one silver lining is, I can operate the invoices. So I can see exactly how much per hour the former transportation director is making as well as what type of services they're working on. So maybe when we find out more information, you guys, you know, because they're going to spend that $15,000. So, and then they're going to come back here with some story about how they need more money. So when they come back with that story about how they need more money, maybe we'll get four votes, or maybe even more, against giving them more money. I would say that it's like, you know, spending money like drunken sailors on this contract, but I think that's insulting than drunken sailors. Now, the connection between Ryan Sharp and the Rodin issue is, you know, in the emails between the city employees and the Kimley Horn consultants about the curbside management parking study, as Ryan Sharp called it, is that he asked in the survey to include a question on streeterries, and then he added a comment that it's only a minority of people in town that are opposed to them. Well, I guess it's only the minority of people in town that have rats and mice in their apartments from the irresponsible streeterries. And that just goes to my hypothesis on the public outreach from Kimley Horn, which is designed so the respondents to their questions agree with what their conclusions are so they can say, see, the public is behind us. And that letter from those three people in Bike Hoboken, in my opinion, was not an accident. One of the signers of that letter is a transportation consultant himself who works for a similar firm, and I think there's a non-zero chance, in my opinion, that he knows the consultants doing the Kimley study and they said to him, hey, wouldn't it be great if you guys can write a letter? So then we can say the public is behind raising residential parking permits from $54 to 250, whatever, I forgot the exact number that they proposed. Because let's be honest, there's some people in town that if parking went up $250 and more than 85% of parking spaces were filled, they would raise it again. Because there is an ideology from Dr. Donald Shoup, the guy who writes all the books about raising residential parking fees because he's against subsidies or whatever language he uses, he's a professor. Unlike you guys who are on the ground here from constituents, his belief, Dr. Shoup's belief, is that parking should have 70 to 85% occupancy. And if it's higher than 85%, then you got to raise the price. And you gotta keep raising the price until a park, you know, parking spots open up. So it's time for this city to wake the heck up and realize what's going on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Jerry? We had no ordinances. Motion to close public pushing. Oh, sorry.
Use this mic right here, Lisa. Right behind you, this microphone right here. Hi, yep, there you go. I was at home, in bed, watching this.
Could you spell your last name?
B-A-L-O-U-M-A.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a little upset at the moment, so excuse my temperament, my shaking probably because I take this very personally. I own Barbass Restaurant, which you guys have been speaking about all night. I fought for my restaurant as I fought for this town for the past 20-something years. I would do nothing to harm this town. Anyone who knows me personally knows how much I love Hoboken, how much I do for Hoboken, how much I believe in Hoboken. So for me to be sitting at home, watching my business be demolished, be criticized, be put down, you can't understand what that's like unless you own a business, or a family, or a reputation, or anything like that, okay? I personally go there every morning. I personally, you could ask my husband, because he'll say, why are you doing that? Ask the bus boy. Why are you doing that? Ask the bus driver. Why? Because this is like my home. Because this is, this is a representation of our town. So yes, you will see me out there sweeping, you will see me out there mopping, you will see me cleaning the neighbor's garbage. You look at Barbass, the building to the right, any day of the week, garbage galore that comes from the garbage cans in between the building adjacent to me and next to, I forget the name of the business, it's like one of the oldest businesses. What?
Sims, Sims Paping.
So in between him and that building are some garbage cans. Sims, great guy, love him. In between Sims and that.
This guy come close to the microphone, please.
In between Sims and that apartment are some garbage cans on the street. You can ask my staff, you can ask me, I don't lie. Again, I love this town more than anything, so much so that I left it once and came back eight months later. I will go out there numerous times a day to take the garbage from that building that blows this way into the front of my building and then blows this way and you have.
The microphone, please.
Then you have the garbage, then you have the gas station, okay? I'm constantly picking up garbage from all those buildings, myself. I am constantly sending Nora, who you can, I will send you the emails of the pictures I send Nora, showing the people that live upstairs above Barbass and the people that live upstairs in the building adjacent to Barbass, of these kids, because most of them are kids, leaving their garbage. I could show you the photos right now on my phone. Every single time I take pictures of those garbage bags, because what do these kids do? Or these tenants, because they're not owners, you know? They leave them outside my back door. We have 1300 Park has double doors right next to the gas station. You open them up, you go in, there's about maybe six garbage cans, maybe more, I'm off the top of my head, six. These kids, these tenants are leaving their bags outside the double doors, the metal double doors, and not putting them in the garbage cans. Ask Nora how many times I've sent her pictures of that. It's not us, it's not us. If some muscles, as some people have mentioned, have gone astray, that's because when they take the garbage, the people who are in charge of taking the garbage, putting them on the street, all kinds of wackos are going through the garbage, leaving their, their other gar- you can't imagine the wackos walking down that street, the things I see. One guy who's constantly putting pictures and posters all over our building, all over our corners, leaving his own garbage. People don't take care of themselves in this town right now. They're leaving their shit on top of my shit and I'm getting blamed for it. I mean, honestly, watch this video tonight, you might as well just close my business and crucify me after all I fought for in this town. You think I want rats? I didn't invent rats in Hoboken. Let's talk about the hospital across from my other business, La Boheme. Do you want to talk about rats? Let's talk about the hospital, because that's disgusting. I can't even see people outside there because it's so embarrassing what goes on at that hospital. So I built a parquet to try and cover it. All I'm doing is trying to make this town better and prettier, fighting for it left and right. I may even have to move out of this town because it's become impossible to live here as much as I love this town. But for me to be criticized when all I do is fight for this town, I love Hoboken, you think I want to be blamed for rats? Rats have been here since Frank Sinatra was here. I went down to the waterfront the other day.
Your time is up?
Okay.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
But everyone else has had so much time to criticize my business, to crucify my business that I fought so freaking hard for through COVID, through everything else, for me to sit at home and watch people talk about my business as like it's garbage? I'm there every morning, I'm there every night cleaning, making sure that place is gorgeous, then making sure we're bettering this town as much as we can, paying, paying, paying? Like, I opened up a business recently and they made me pay for a traffic consultant to see if my business was going to cause traffic.
I'm sorry, can, can you?
The things I've done.
The limit is five minutes, I'm, I'm not trying to be.
Okay, five minutes, that's it, that's all I have to say. That's all I have to say. But to criticize me for rats when these rats have been here way before any of you? And I'm the only business being discussed about? How many restaurants are there in Hoboken, out of curiosity? How many restaurants? Because I don't see any other restaurants being mentioned.
Other businesses were mentioned and other properties were mentioned.
Really?
But yes, The Shepherd and The Knucklehead, did you hear that repeatedly?
Okay.
So anyway, I'm not trying to get in the back and forth, okay? I apologize for the limitation.
No, I apologize, but this is very sensitive to me.
I'm sure it is.
Because this is very special to me, and this town is very special to me. My business is very special to me. My part of this community is even more special to me. So when I'm at home and I see this going on, sorry.
I understand. Alex Garcia.
Alex Garcia, six ward. By the way, Happy New Year, all of yous.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you, Council President Jim Doyle, congratulations. And this is just a reminder of the resolution, email sent out last year. This is looking into sooner than later, actually. Residents that go to Platinum Fitness are complaining already on Sunday. Bennys complained as well too, customers are already complaining Bennys. And I'm complaining, a resident, on a Sunday. Live here my whole life, and I'm getting taken on Sunday, the only day that I have to park freely. So I know you guys basically have an agenda today, I'm just asking is to get with it. I sent an email to all of you guys, look into it, there's come up an agenda, plan, residents are complaining, businesses are complaining, and that's that. Secondly, regarding the rat population, here's a suggestion, maybe it could be something we brought about. How about spraying pesticide, organic pesticides on the street cleaning days? On Washington Street, that could be an idea, because they all come from the garbage, they come from the sewers, something basically, like for example, on the weekends, the bars are Fridays and Saturdays, you could spray on Friday mornings for the weekend. That could be something to thought about. And on the sidewalk, on the side streets could be in the days that you actually pick up the garbage. You know, I'm not sure what days, it could be a Tuesday, a Thursdays, pick one of those days of the week, or add another day of the week to move your car to spray organic pesticides on the, on the street. And then a day, basically, they come from the sewers or it's just a solution, as well as, I'm thinking about, like for example, businesses and residential's have monthly checkups, like a checklist of, people have exterminators come into the building, exterminate, have the health department come check up on them to make sure, like, you see how many McDonald's that have the bathrooms? You check the bathroom, if they clean out the bathroom, you sign up, you know, 2 o'clock, 4 o'clock, 6 o'clock, somebody signed in, they're cleaning the bathroom, do the same thing, do the same thing as property management. What business, go out, make around, may help the health. out, make around, may have the health department go check up on that. I get it, it's manpower for the city, I get it, but some ideas, and so let me complaining, I'm trying to bring some resolutions for you guys, trying to help you guys out. And last but not least, I want to thank the entire city council for coming together with the mayor regarding the whole redevelopment of Garage B. Great idea. Thank you for guys coming in, and then I hope you guys look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia. Okay, close the public portion.
Motion to close. Anybody else want to speak? No?
No, they didn't sign up. So. Hi. Hi. Okay. So, a new business, we have one matter, we have an emergency resolution, there's, we have to, we're being requested to extend the hours at the path station for construction activities relating to, it's from the 13th to the 15th of this month, two nights where, three nights where the hours between 11, get it done, 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, trucks would be allowed to bring equipment in that's going to be used during the activities from the 30th to the 25th, 30th of January to 25th. So, it's, it'll, yeah, I'm, you know what, I mean, I don't think it really matters what it is, it's large equipment, it has to go down the elevator.
They pre-staged the equipment, they can start the work on the 25th, that's supposed to bring in the equipment the day of, the equipment's going to be there already the first day it goes, sorry, the day the pass station close, all the equipment's there to start the work, instead of bringing the work down the 25th, it'll just extend the date, so.
And it won't be particularly loud activity, it will just be, and it's trucks, and we don't need the congestion during the workday, so, so we have two resolutions, one to approve, to acknowledge that there is not time between now and the next meeting. This is, this is the 13th, 14th, and 15th. So, Jerry, do you have, is it, is it going to be an oral, just an oral emergency motion? I will sponsor it. Anybody? All right. Anybody want to talk about it, or all those in favor? Mr. Freina, can we call a vote?
Emergency. Mr. Cohen.
On the emergency.
We could vote on both of them together.
Okay, okay, both together.
If you, if you choose, Council President.
Since it's been, since it's been your requirement over the years, it's never your choice. That's true.
Yes, how about we do it together, Jimmy?
Yeah, definitely. Mr. Cohen.
I. Counsel President.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Jabour.
Yes.
President Dano.
Aye.
Scantaro.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye. Counsel President.
Motion to close?
No.
No, I, I do want all the council members to email me with their preferences for subcommittees, and because, Councilman Fisher.
Just literally, one, one thing that's important to everyone, we have the, that relates to the, the last resolution, so, you know, reminding the public that the path is going to close on the 31st. We've, I'm sorry, the 30th. We've, we were told, you know, there's a general plan to expand alternative transportation to go into the city, and we, my understanding is that the Port Authority at some point, sooner than later, is potentially going to announce those plans. But what I, I think is important, and I mentioned it to Director Freeman, is we understand and talk about that sooner than later, specifically as it relates to Uptown, like our, the second and fifth board constituents, the number of additional ferries that are going to be going, you know, what's that schedule look like? We all have buildings, Phil and I, or Councilman Cohen and I both have, you know, big buildings with shuttles, you know, that aren't, don't even necessarily know what to do with their shuttles, and I feel like we should understand that, just to give that feedback, because we also got feedback already that Director Freeman responded to me with the new congestion charge, apparently, like, the buses in Hoboken are already more full than they were even before this. So I think it's something that we should have a conversation in the next week, so we're just aware of it and maybe contributing into some thoughts they may not necessarily be aware of. So, you directed me to, Director Freeman directed me to Greg, so maybe we can reach out to Greg and have that conversation in the next couple of days, if you're all right with that.
The Port Authority also said they were going to be cross honoring path on the ferry, so I, we could probably learn more about that, because when I tell constituents that, that's like happy news to them, but.
But happy news, but it's cross honoring, but like, if you lived Uptown and always took, if you always took, we talked about this during the meeting, if you always went downtown and paid the $11 per day, wouldn't you want to buy the path and now pay $3, right? Like, we need to figure that out.
Right, but I do think the Port Authority is underwriting that, and I do think, and they told us that they would offer that for Uptown riders as well. So I think, you know, we could probably get clearer communications about that, including schedules.
And also just, and even just in general volumes, because the volumes, we already have ferries uptown that, you know, the 820, the 8 and 820 ferries and the whichever downtown, those in Midtown, the one downtown, they already turn away customers at those times, they're already full, and every day they have an overflow of anywhere from a couple to 15 or 20, so we just need to understand, like, how many more and how it's going to work, et cetera.
I, I do know that New, because my wife told me, the bus driver told me this, that they are, she takes the bus from Willow every morning, that the, New Jersey Transit has been running extra buses for practice purposes along.
We required them to do that, yeah.
Along Washington Street, so they're already preparing that portion.
No working.
For extra passengers along the.
Been horrible. Washington Street's been horrible lately, and I've been.
And that's just the congestion charge, that's not even the path closure.
No, that's just, they're brewing more buses right now, so.
Oy. So anyway, that, that's it, so it's a big deal, and we should learn more.
Just a quick question for the Director. Director, when a, when a building doesn't shovel their snow, who do we issue that summons to?
So that was actually the genesis of the change in the ordinance from two years ago was specifically related to both garbage collection and snow shoveling, where a ticket was, a summons was issued by an inspector, and then the court would dismiss it, and then we came back to try to figure out how to address that. So it is a, it's an ongoing.
So they've been, they've been getting away with that one, too, since?
Not necessarily, not necessarily, but there are, there are, it is a challenge, right? It's, it's not getting away with it, it is a enforcement challenge that we're looking to try to solve for.
All right, thanks, that's all I had.
Motion to close?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Mmm.
She snuck it in.